Okay, I think we're ready to go. And Commissioner Jed, I believe you're kicking us off this evening. Or did I get that wrong? Is it supposed to be Sophia?
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Hello, Portland, and welcome everyone to the Independent District Commission meeting. Today is Wednesday, August 9th. We will be meeting from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. virtually via Zoom and in person here at the Portland Building. It's good to see all of you, and thank you all for making time to be here this evening. Before we get started, I will pass things off to our city staff to help us go over some Zoom meeting logistics.
Thank you. Okay, so for everyone, this meeting is being recorded and a copy of the recording will be posted on the Independent District Commission's website under Past Meetings and Event. Today, we have closed captioning, American Sign Language and Spanish Interpretation available. Sorry, that got cut off from the Zoom overview slide. But to access interpretation, you can click on the globe icon on the bottom right of your screen. And to turn on closed captioning, just press on the CC button up on your Zoom control panels. Commissioners, this is your reminder to change your Zoom chat setting to everyone. So folks listening along tonight can follow along with the conversation in the chat. And then, community members, welcome. Today, we have the Q and A feature Zoom feature available on Zoom. So if you have any questions or thoughts as we are going through this meeting, please feel free to put them through there. Our public comment period did close on July 22nd. So if you have additional questions, you can always please, you can always submit them via email to districtcommission@portlandoregon.gov. And with that, that is it for our Zoom overview.
This evening, we're going to follow up on the conversation we had last evening in terms of the mapping. We're going to go through the work group presentation from last night. After that, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll begin this discussion of how we can refine the work groups' maps that came together last evening and follow up on next steps and then adjourn.
Perfect. And I'm just going to briefly walk through the approach. We've seen a version of this slide, but just to, so everyone's up to speed on our essentially the roadmap for the next several weeks for the Commission. Today, as Commissioner Sprecher Jed just laid out, we'll discuss the work groups revised maps from the last work session and really have a full and robust discussion around potential map revisions themes and just really getting alignment among the Commission. And if the Commission is ready and would like to eliminate certain maps, but really just will focus on mapping today. From there, we'll move forward to next, next Wednesday's meeting. We'll focus further on any further map revision and in any narrowing or focusing. And it'll also be the first legally legal opportunity for the Commission to take a vote. And as a reminder, the Commission has up to, up to two official votes that it can take on a map and next week would be the first potential opportunity, but it also would not be required if you deem that you're not ready as a Commission. And then the, the final planned, final scheduled meeting is for August 21st also, and that's a Monday. And that could be either a first vote or a second vote if that were needed. And that would also consist of more of the administrative functions around numbering districts and be an opportunity for the Commission to reflect on its process, make recommendations, and prepare any kind of materials that you'd like to be passed on either to the next Commission or to be prepared for voters. And as a reminder, we have a number of different mechanisms we can use to gauge consensus and where the Commission is as a body and individuals. Those include straw polls more informally, just to gauge interest and temperature, formal motions. That can be helpful for really identifying kind of areas of alignment or eliminating potential maps or eliminating features. Roll calls, roll call vote, we are mandated to have that for the final vote. Even though we can continue to use modified consensus generally, we still do need to note for the record where you land on, on a final map. And again, you can work to eliminate maps as possible and use a work group to help narrow the focus of the maps going forward. Next slide, please. And actually, I'll pause there. Are there any, are there any questions, Commissioner Chisholm?
Yeah, we only get two formal votes. So is part of this process that when we get to a place of a formal vote where somebody wants to have our first formal vote, they make a motion, let's have a vote. There's a second, let's have a formal vote. And then we vote on whether to have a vote before we move to the actual vote? Or does that not, that step down is it? There's a motion and a second, we're having a formal vote? Or is there a vote to have a vote?
Yes. So a, it's a, so there would be a, a motion to have a vote when the, when the body's ready, that would need to be seconded. That would be, we would use a simple majority for that, for that vote. And that helps also to clearly establish for the record what map you are voting on. And then that would need to pass again with that simple majority. So half plus one. And then the next vote, so that would trigger the final vote, I'd reiterate again what the vote is, identify it as a final vote, and then that will require nine, nine or more affirmative votes. And just for the record, voting, as is true for all of the, the Commission's business, when we do roll call votes, that can be a yay, nay, or an abstain. Okay. Any other questions? Or any proposed revisions? Okay. Can we move to the next slide, please?
Sorry, one sec. It's kind of stuck.
It's okay. And Sophia, and Sophia, if you need it, I can also pull up the deck if you, if you're frozen.
Yeah, that might be good, or it's just froze for me.
No problem. Just give me one second. So I'm guessing this may actually be a server issue. It's actually not working for me anymore.
Let me try it again.
Yeah. I'll try this too.
Okay, can you see my slides?
I can.
Oh, man.
Thank you. Perfect. So there, there was a question last evening. There were a couple of points around just clarifying which motions were taken for this body, but also a sense that, you know, reviewing the agreements and the decisions that the body did make, especially ahead of the formal public comment period in July, but also interest in validating those positions and whether they still hold. So we did want to review just a, just briefly, kind of the history of the votes taken. So on April 10th, the Commission formally voted that it would use the existing criteria that were approved as part of the ballot measure in 2022 and not add additional criteria that passed. The, a few weeks later, May 3rd, there was a motion to have the IDC focus on the consideration, focus, it's consideration of maps that meet the Commission's criteria. Kind of like not formal criteria, but that, you know, as you're considering, had two or two to three districts along the southern border and a central district. And as a reminder, the kind of central district map had a district in the middle and was tended to be surrounded by others. Also passed, May 17th, the Commission voted to no longer focus on maps that had a separate Western District. And that was west of the Willamette River. And actually, I think that, oh, sorry, no longer focus on maps that separate a Western District. Sorry, that would split it. Correct. And then on that same, there were more multiple motions on the day as you were focusing. So you also voted to no longer focus on maps that would separate districts of the east of the 205 as well. So that essentially established those two kind of districts, east of the 205 and one west of the Willamette. And it was withdrawn, but there was a proposal to no longer focus on maps that had a central district. So those, those are still under consideration. Still working on slide. This one passed, no longer focusing on maps that included St. John's in a Western District. That was also on May 17th. And to be clear, all of those last motions on the 17th were specific to the current consideration of the draft maps ahead of passing the draft maps and going into the July, the month of July with public comment. And similarly, and this one was withdrawn, but there was a motion to continue considering map options that included St. John's into a Western District. So there were sort of two kind of competing motions. And then finally, right before passing, or sorry, in terms of passing the draft maps, it was considering all three. At the time, they were nine, like a nine seat, 10 seat, and 11 seat draft maps. Those were named ultimately Alder, I think in this order, Alder Cedar and Maple. Okay. And then I will pass.
Thank you, Autumn. Yes, for that, for that recap. So Commissioners, last night, several Commissioners met as part of a mapping work group. Our goal was to produce revised maps for consideration by the full Commission tonight. So kind of grounded in a discussion of some of the themes that have come up, especially between these two maps and considering as well what sort of consensus map features were supported through the hearings and where we need to focus more of our deliberation. The work group last night went through a process of working with flow to revise the Alder and Maple maps. Some of these were small changes that were tinkering sort of around the edges of some of these boundaries that did not impact our criteria or draft map themes or affect population in any way. But there were some other changes as well that were a little more substantive and warranted full discussion or warranted discussion, excuse me, by the full Commission. And our next couple of slides will give a textual description of what some of those proposed revisions are. But just to give a quick readout of the meeting last night, we did revisit some of the previous agreements that we had discussed around keeping historic albino wholly within the North Portland District, conversations around East Portland, et cetera. We did need to articulate a clear, we, we agree that we need to articulate a clear rationale for the decisions and be able to tie them back to the mapping criteria and the data and the public input. And really trying to find a balance as well between using the feedback we've received to date to inform these decisions going forward and also making decisions with, you know, limited opportunities for specific public feedback. So we were also attempting to reconcile themes from the public input analysis regarding communities of common interest. And, you know, did a little walkthrough of each of the proposed changes and discussing some of the underlying rationale for those. So our next couple of slides will give, like I said, a textual description of some of the updates that were made. So I'll, I'm going to go ahead and read out, give a, just a brief synopsis of what these changes are, and I will look to Commissioners Vensical Robbins and Chisholm for the Maple map on the next slide to just fill in any gaps that I might be missing in this report out. So starting with the first change regarding the Sunderland neighborhood. So the boundary in the Sunderland neighborhood was moved eastward towards the Portland Airport in order to better connect the population within that neighborhood, as well as to try and accommodate some of the industrial planning considerations that was raised in a meeting with the City Planning Department. The second change to the Alder map was in regard to the boundary between the Roseway and Cully neighborhoods. So this boundary was moved just slightly. Two census blocks on the west side of Northeast 63rd were changed from the Southeast Central District in Teal and up into the North Northeast District in, in Orange. The third change to the Alder map was in regard to the Ardenwald Johnson Creek neighborhood. And this was a slight edit around the, the boundary to smooth out some of those, some of those, the shaping down there. So the boundary, moving the boundary westward and aligning its northern boundary along Crystal Springs Boulevard. The fourth change was in regard to the Brooklyn neighborhood, and this was a error that was corrected from the original Alder map. Giving the area that's bounded by Southeast Holgate Boulevard and the Blocklin, that's part of the Brooklyn neighborhood, but it was accidentally districted with the Selwood block. So there's a little triangle that was returned back to the Brooklyn neighborhood as part of the Southeast Central Teal District. Commissioner Vensical Robbins, anything to highlight or note from that?
All right.
Awesome. Thank you. You know, next slide, please.
Commission, and Commissioner Laurenti.
Yes.
There was a hand. Commissioner Manhadas, do you still do?
Yeah, I just had a question about the first change. My recollection was that we were going to get some more information about the City Planning Group request. So we understood the rationale for that before we actually made the change. Well, the other three seemed pretty straightforward.
That's a different request.
Oh, okay. Maybe I'm misunderstanding that. Sorry.
But I did follow up with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability on that request. I have not heard back from them yet.
Okay, if it's different, then that's fine. I was just trying to understand. I was understanding this is the area near the airport. This is different.
Yeah, but the other, the other city request had to do with kind of from the slough down to Columbia Boulevard and between 33rd and 82nd, I believe. And we're just trying to get clarity from them as to what they were actually asking for, because it was, and it was kind of unintelligible in the thing that they sent us.
So is that different than change one?
Yes. And so it's not on here because we're waiting for them to get back to us.
I apologize. I might have misspoke and mentioned that in my comments, but yeah, that's a separate thing. I apologize. Yeah.
I think it's interesting that the deviation reduces. And by the way, Portland Building Room, we can hear you. No problem. Well, I think we're supposed to, but also.
And Autumn, were there any other questions or can we go to Maple?
And I would say when we're live mapping, maybe just so, just so we're all clear on, so the change number one, maybe we can, when we're live mapping, we can actually look at that area just to make sure everyone's clear on what the boundary is. Okay. With the two kind of points of contention are. Okay. All right. You're all good.
Thank you, Autumn. So next is the proposed revised Maple III map. This map makes the same changes that we just mentioned in the Sunderland neighborhood, as well as the boundary in the, between the Roseway and Cully neighborhoods. Those, those are both the same. There is a slight tweak on the area between I-205 and I-84. Based on last night's discussion, there, there is no population in that census block, but it is just a weird shape that we decided to put into the Teal District just to align and make consistent with the, with the Alder map there. So that's the third one. Change number four is in regard to the Roseway neighborhood. So the area within the Roseway neighborhood, north of Sandy Boulevard, which on the original Maple map was in the North District, that district is now made wholly within the Southeast Central District that we know in Teal. So the entirety of the Roseway neighborhood is together in a single district. The fifth change to the updated Maple map is in regard to the Hosford Abernathy neighborhood. So the area within Hosford Abernathy, west of Southeast 12th, so you think of the area of Lads Edition, that neighborhood is now made whole and is amongst, is together with the Buckman and Kerns neighborhood in the Cross River District with, with the West Side Community. So that's the last change to the Maple map. Commissioner Chisholm, anything to add or supplement to that?
Yeah, so the Roseway change makes Maple exactly the same as Alder in that Rose City Park, Roseway area, Sandy Boulevard area. And ultimately, the vet of all of these changes is that Alder and Maple are identical, except with a thing we've all been debating, which is, you know, what's, what part of the, of the east side is part of the West District? Is it Kerns, Buckman, Hosford, Abernathy, or is it Selwood, Moreland, Eastmoreland? So they, they are all now completely aligned, except for the big question we've all been wrestling with.
And for, and in the working group, there was a discussion around changes four and five because for the Maple map, it kind of, if the decision was to make Roseway whole, but to make it part of the Teal District, the more Southern District, then there was a question around whether that necessitated a trade off, a population trade off with extending Hosford Abernathy versus potentially moving the Roseway District whole, keeping it whole and moving it to the north. And so that was a, that was a deliberation in the question that, you know, a version of this map that does live online and is called Maple III does reflect these changes as they're listed here. But there was debate around whether those had to be the trade offs and whether there were other considerations. And Commissioner Manhadas, I do see your hand too.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification, Autumn, because I was going to bring that up. And just for consistency, my sense was, and this is on the previous map, it seemed like there was one change that we hadn't really aligned around because we were waiting for more information on the first map. And on this map, four and five really called for further discussion. So I don't know how that could be reflected so that it's clear where there's alignment and where the proposed changes that might be part of a separate conversation that maybe, I mean, because part of it is with the Roseway neighborhood. When we looked at four on its own, it's, it created a deviation that maybe was outside the realm of what made sense. And so that needs to be considered. And then on five, it was an extension into the Southeast neighborhood, and that seemed to be part of a larger conversation that we wanted to have with the full group around where we cross the river. So I don't know how we could reflect that. I just don't want it to seem like these are sort of slate changes that are going to come into these maps and, and that just happens. So just want, so it would be helpful to delineate sort of where we have alignment and where we still have, need to have conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, and to be clear, I think we're kind of like in this phase right now where we can, I think, hear from the rest of the working group that was there and maybe start to pull out. Especially upon like further reflection, how are you feeling about some of these things? Do they feel about right? Would you like to take more time to focus in on some of these areas during the live, live mapping session as well? So thank you for kind of picking that up too, Commissioner Chisholm.
Yeah, just two things. One, if we made the Roseway change, but not the Hosford change, the deviation jumped over to 6.7%. The three things. Number two, the Hosford change was part of the requests from the Hosford neighborhood in the public engagement process. They wanted to be made whole and kept at Buckman. And then number three, my understanding, Autumn, was we had, you asked the work group last night, so we're moving forward with Alder four and Maple three, and there was a consensus around that. Not even the heads, we actually moved forward to this. Doesn't mean we can't change it now, but just want to reflect what we discussed yesterday.
That's right. And did say like, moving forward with versions of the maps to discuss today as part of the group, knowing that, you know, there was the inability to kind of, I think in last week's meeting, there was some discussion around, you know, taking, is it possible to create one consensus map that almost blends Alder and Maple? And getting into the work group and kind of coming out of it, there were still two distinct maps that had more and more similarities. And so this group, there was discussion around having this group really focus on the kind of core drivers and differences between those two maps and other considerations that could potentially be incorporated going forward. And I see heads nodding. Okay, sounds about right for the group. Commissioner Manhadas and then Commissioner Hansen.
Yeah, I just want to, I mean, I want to revise the record on that because I don't think there was consensus about moving forward with the changes to the maps. So I do think that we were moving forward with having conversations around each map. But I do think that we need to have a conversation here around process and approach around whether we're going to look at each map separate and continue to make, go down the path of making tweaks to each map and then come to a place where we are deciding on a map or if we're, like what the process is there. So I, I don't think there was, there wasn't a decision made at that point, but we did come to, to realize that we have sort of two folks advocating for two different maps and there's big questions. They don't really reconcile very easily, was my understanding of that. So we do need to have a process for addressing that. And would also like to request, because I feel like we couldn't get to it yesterday because we were focused on these changes that were brought to the work group. Some of the other changes that folks wanted to consider to the maps before we get to a final vote. And those included questions like how to promote collaboration by bringing some of the neighborhoods together. So like Roseway, Rose City, Hollywood, even just looking at different, what that does to population deviation. And I feel like that would be easier if we had one map to focus on, but I feel like we weren't able to get to a point where other Commissioners were able to actually put changes on the table.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hansen.
Yeah. So one small comment, I'm noticing zooming in at the Gateway Green area will change number three on the current slide. It looks like there's one census block that's not filled in. So just flagging that for the flow team and it looks that way on, on both maps. I'm imagining it should be in Teal, but just so that's there. And then another question I had, I, I wondered if the work group last night talked at all about like the Montevilla comments. We got a handful of comments about like Montevilla. I'm seeing both a nod and a shake of head, which I take it to mean still needs to be discussed in the larger Commission. But yeah, so was just wondering about that. But again, perhaps that's something that like, this was more about building consistency between the two maps and that's like on the list of things to discuss later.
So just to, here, here is my understanding of yesterday's meeting. There was, there was some hesitancy around making substantial changes or really substantive, but kind of bigger changes that probably required some level of deliberation. And so to not kind of get ahead of the full group or feel like the group was making decisions that might have, you know, affected more boundaries that were not kind of either like joining more clear, like things that either like combining neighborhoods that were clearly split or not. And there was even some debate around whether to split or to join some, right? Or to how to approach that. And so the Montevilla, so there were questions around specific, and we do have a slide that enumerated some of these. Having the whole group review the boundaries for Brooklyn, Rose City Park, Hollywood, Roseway and Montevilla, thinking about what does collaboration mean? And even, you know, if you shift whole neighborhoods north or to a different district versus other districts, right? How does that impact things? And then of course, looking at the consolidation potential of assets or certain populations into using one map versus the other or distributing them. So those are some of the bigger pieces there too. Commissioner Vanceical Robbins.
I just wanted, oh, sorry, I don't know how to work the technology in this room. But anyway, I just wanted to note just for the record that, and it's on the slides, that none of these changes to Alder or Maple resulted in, in a, in widening the population deviation. They actually narrowed him for both of the maps.
The versions, again, that's Maple III that is available online and Alder IV that's available online. The versions, again, that's Maple three that is available online and Alder four that's available online. Are there any other, are there questions for the work group? Are there any other areas that you'd like to elevate explicitly for the broader commission that we kind of haven't discussed? And are there additional requests in terms of either process or how we approach the mapping? Because we can't, we will also establish just an approach to how you'd like to use the mapping time. We have about an hour and forty-five minutes allocated just for live mapping with flow. And so we do want to focus that approach. Yeah. Which map would you like to start in? Would you like to focus on big changes? Would you like to focus on boundaries first or some bigger questions too? Commissioner Manhares? You're on, and you're on mute, Commissioner.
Yeah, sorry about that. Before we get into the live mapping, because we did talk about the challenges associated with live mapping in the larger group. And so I want to make sure that we don't go down a rabbit hole that feels a little bit confusing, speaking for myself. So I think it would be helpful just for me, I don't know if I can make this request, if we could have maybe a straw poll before we get into that around which folks are leaning, which map folks are leaning towards as a base map to work on at this point, because then we can decide how to allocate our time to each, because it's going to take a really long time to do this to two maps. And so if we can decide whether folks feel more comfortable making the tweaks to the Alder map or they would prefer the Maple map using a straw poll, I think that would be really helpful.
And I did see some head nods there or positive reactions too. And Commissioner Fleishman?
Yes, thanks, Commissioner Manhares. Just on, just on that topic, I'm trying to understand, are you suggesting that now, or are you suggesting this kind of before we go on our break, because we still have about twenty minutes or so allocated for this part of the conversation. And kind of once I hear that, I have kind of a, a, a follow-up question.
And sorry, Commissioner Manhares?
Sorry, I, my hand is giving up. I think it would be fine now, just because it's sort of a temperature check. And then we can sort of gauge and have conversation around how folks feel. So it's kind of like, get a straw poll, see how folks feel about that. If folks are really uncomfortable with sticking to one map and we want to go through a two map live editing process, then we can do that. But I think it would just be helpful to get a sense. And my understanding is that we can do as many straw polls as are needed to gauge temperature or where folks are at. And have heard also that, with the Charter Commission, for example, as they were starting to get closer to decision-making, there was a lot of straw pulling. So I think there's like, it's just a, a process piece that I think might be helpful for folks to get a sense of, of where the room's at. But Autumn, I will defer to you.
So, so let me, let me, based on that, then, then, then I can kind of frame my question in, in comment, which is, I would love to hear from some more of the folks who were in the working group, kind of at this point in their reflections, as opposed to kind of having the present, the more technical presentation of, of the maps and kind of the, the high level changes and characterization of those changes. I'd love to hear from others around that because that feels like it's part of this session before we move into consideration. Because I do have questions, but I, but before I ask those questions, I feel like I'd, I'd love to hear from my fellow commissioners who participated in this work session and I'll close by saying thank you to those commissioners for taking the extra time yesterday to do that.
So just so you know, Commissioner Manhares, the intent was to get aligned on the process to how we do mapping, not just to jump into it, but to take the beginning of the next session, just to like kind of focus in, once folks had kind of heard from the full, sorry, from the full kind of work group in terms of kind of areas that you wanted to focus on or ask questions. That said, I think if we do like a thumbs up, a hand raise kind of situation and folks would like that clarification first before hearing from the rest of the work group, we can also do it that way too. So.
I also think it's fine just to hear from the rest of the work group. I don't think there's a rush into it so that folks have enough information and we don't have to keep the process going.
Okay, but we, but we did, but we did plan to build that in just so we could actually work with flow and kind of use all of your time the way you kind of need it in order to make those decisions going forward. Commissioner Chisholm, anything to add?
Yes, and hopefully my audio is better now. We're at the point right now where Alder and Maple, as I said earlier, are exactly the same. With the exception of that western edge, the Willamette River edge. So I would suggest that if there are changes that are not related to that, and there is a discussion around the Montevilla boundary change, there are other suggestions, we should make them on both maps. I mean, if we all agree that we ought to change the Montevilla boundary, let's do it in Maple and Alder, for example. You know, and we can work around the sort of other shifts that need to happen or could happen. And then finally get to the big question of like, what are we doing with the Willamette River, the east bank of the Willamette question?
Commissioner Manhares?
Yeah, can I respond and just say that I think the difficulty with that is that if we make those changes, it does have impact on deviation. And it, it does impact each map differently in terms of deviation for each district. And so this is why I think, again, we're not at this stage eliminating any map. Folks might continue to decide to move forward with tweaking each map or going through one and the other. I think it's just getting a sense for what folks like to focus on one map or the other map, or where are we leaning towards so that we can best use our time? So that, that's more it. But I do think if we make those changes before, that does have different implications for each map in terms of population deviation. So it's not really identical in that way.
Okay. And before you jump in, Commissioner Vince Robbins, one, thank you, Commissioner Manhares. Two, I actually do have a question for the work group that I think can maybe help share your thinking out a little bit more. But Commissioner Vince Robbins, would you like to?
Oh, Habin?
Well, I guess what I, I just wanted to clarify, at the beginning of the presentation, we talked about what we had already voted on. And so I'm assuming that that is a memorialization of those decisions that continue to live today with respect to how, what, how the maps are going to be drawn, what components are going to stay the same. And the one that was not on the slide, I don't believe was that historic albina would stay in the north, northeast. I don't know that we voted on that, but it's something that we have been, at least I was assuming from all of our conversations, that we were going to continue to support that as well so that the map, whatever the map is, needs to also reflect that. And I just wanted to know if that, if I'm correct in my assumptions about that.
I believe that did not have a full, I, I believe there was consensus around that and it, there was no formal motion to kind of memorialize the decision. I believe the staff pulled the actual motions from minutes. Yep. But just my recollection is that that was, had very broad support across the commission as a kind of grounding pillar. So I wanted to know from the work group, so for members of the work group who were there last night, there were certain, there were certain, as you described them, larger decisions that you wanted to discuss with the full commission. I think it would be helpful for, if, if some of you have some of those thoughts that you're wrestling with or that you would like this, this body to consider tonight, how would you frame those? Those, either those issues, the tensions or the questions that you have? Commissioner Valdini?
So I think, and this is just off the top of my head, but I think that really the heart of the matter is where do we cross the river? And I, I would, I think it would be great if our discussion turned to that. We did a lot of intricate work responding to the public comments. I think last night we, we took care of a lot of the, the easy stuff that came through in the comments. And tonight, I think our, our time would be best spent if, I mean, you know, I'm certainly not wanting to disrupt the agenda or anything, but I'm, I'm less excited about live mapping and more excited about just talking through the real philosophical differences between the two maps on hand and just getting all of that out on the table so that we have time to digest it before we potentially have to vote next week. Because that feels like, it feels like it's happening very quickly now. So that's what I would hope. I would hope for less live mapping and more just discussion of this big issue that's kind of staring us in the face.
I'm also seeing some, some thumbs up there. Okay. Are there any other kind of big areas of focus that you'd like this group to, to really dive into tonight? We've heard spend more time on the kind of critical discussions themselves before jumping into the maps. Commissioner Manhares and then Commissioner Lumley? Sorry to do it again, Commissioner Manhares, you're on the.
It's like I've never used Zoom before. I, sorry, that's my turn to thought. I just fully wanted to second that suggestion, given where we are in the process. And I think it would be a good idea to, to maybe frame the straw polling. So again, this is how will help me, I think, organize my thoughts is, if we had a straw poll before we dive into that difficult discussion and then we can do a straw poll after the discussion to see how folks are moving and shifting. I actually think it'll help us get to a point where we can make some decisions about more specific map changes. But that's sort of where I was thinking about the straw polling. So I think it could be a good frame for that discussion if we are good to go there. But I, I second that suggestion.
And to be clear, the, the straw poll still stands, really sensing if there right now is a preference for starting with any particular map as a base versus another approach, for instance, using two maps side by side. Commissioner Lumley?
Thank you. I saw an email exchange regarding the Montevilla neighborhood and the J district that Cory was involved in. And I was wondering, at some point, we probably should have a conversation about that. I don't know if now is the right time to do that, but we should hear from Cory about this at some point.
Okay. And then I'd imagine also, I mean, it's not just hearing from any one commissioner on the item, but I think you're, you wanted to present if there was some thinking around it, just getting, hearing from the rest of the commission too.
Yes, definitely. But the topic should be introduced by somebody at some point.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner Hanson, followed by Commissioner Fleishman and maybe Commissioner Lumley if you wanted to jump in again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioners Hanson and Fleishman.
Yeah, someone's on top of lowering hands today. It's happened to me too. I was going to say, I, I agree with Commissioner Lumley that that's, there's like a whole list of, of things that we need to talk about. And I also agree really strongly with Commissioners Valdini and Manhares and that I would like to have the bigger picture conversation first, so we're not missing the forest for the trees. So we can actually have, have the conversation about the, the sort of philosophical big picture. And then from there, once we have a, a general direction that we're going in, ha- having some of those smaller, smaller adjustment conversations. So just echoing that.
Thank you. And Commissioner Fleishman?
Yeah, having heard from some more, but not all of the work group, I, I feel like I can now ask this question of Commissioner Chisholm, because it'll, it helps me kind of continue to think about kind of how, how I'm framing my own thinking, which is the dimension of one of the changes is to essentially make Hosford Abernathy whole by uniting or keeping it with Buckman. So that, that seems to be half the equation, because the other half the equation from my reading of the public commentary, if that's a reaction to kind of what the public told us was, yes, and don't make us part of a western district. So, so having, having kind of put in half the ingredients for a really successful cake, I'm wondering how you think about that, the other half?
Yeah, look, I think it'd be great if we had a, a deep and meaningful conversation among the thirteen of us, plus Marta, about this big question. Should the West Side include Buckman Kearns and and Hosford Abernathy, or should the West Side include Selwood, Morland, Reed, Ardenwall? I think it's a totally legitimate question to wrestle with. I'm pretty happy, you know, with where we are. These are the two finalists. They're the two best maps I think we've seen out of the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds we've done. And I think we should have that exact conversation. I would like to do it before we have a straw poll because I think there's a lot of folks who here have a lot to say on both sides of that question. It is true that there are folks in Hosford who said, one, put us whole, two, put us with Buckman, three, don't make us part of the West Side District. By the same token, you've got an enormous number of people in Selwood and more, East Morland saying, don't put us in the West Side District either. And so I think it's, it's not a matter of a nose count in terms of the number of people who commented. The commenting process is not a vote, right? As, as was discussed last week. It's just public feedback for all of us to consume and then put together with our best judgment. So I'm, I'm, I'm ready to have that discussion when we're ready to have that discussion.
Commissioner Vance, Uncle Robbins?
Yes, I, I just wanted to add, my feeling is, having now looked at more maps than I ever wanted to in my entire life, there is no way that we're not going to disappoint a, a, a community on the east side of the Willamette River. And I think we just need to make the decision that we feel best satisfies all of the criteria to the best of our ability and is responsive to the degree we can be to what we heard from the public. And I don't think any of us at any of the public hearings avoided saying someone, somewhere is not going to be happy. There's nothing perfect that we can do that's going to satisfy every citizen in Portland. So I just think that we have to make the best choice that we can with the data that we have and what we've heard.
Thank you. I, I am interested in taking a straw poll, but not, not to lock anyone in, but to almost like get a attempt to see if there is a preference, if, if members of the commission have a preference for one of the two kind of like current draft maps on the table, the more revised, the revised versions of Alder or Maple. Or if there's no preference for either of those at this point. Is there any opposition to that, to a straw poll? We would just use like kind of the raise hand function? And I would start with one and then go to the next. Commissioner Fleishman?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, again, subject to the wisdom of this entire group. I kind of would like to rehearse what the, what the rationale is for each of these maps first. Like fully, I, I'd like a proponent of each one of these maps to kind of make the best case for it. Prior to having a straw poll, we've had, we, we've discussed elements of the qualities and challenges of either of these maps. We've talked about revisions. But I, 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 and I'd love to move to a straw poll, but I'd, I'd, I'd love to feel like I was fully informed with the best arguments. And, and I know that other commissioners can make those arguments better than I can. So I'd love to hear the, the case for each map prior to a straw poll.
I would be hesitant. I'll just say like from a facilitation standpoint, I'd be hesitant of putting any individual commissioner in the position of having to advocate for one or the other or having a map. Um, I think unintentionally assigned to any individual commissioner. Uh, I do see some some head nods. How do you want? How would you do that?
I I appreciate I appreciate that 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 point. So. Uh, I wonder whether either of our co-chair persons would would be comfortable characterizing it. And either if we're not, then I I guess we're being asked e- each one of us individually to. To say, uh, we we've lis- we've listened to this, we've considered it and kind of to go back to bottom what what you were suggesting, which is. Given what we each of us know at this point in the process, you know, wh- where's our preference? So I. Again, I don't want to force anybody into a situation that feels uncomfortable. I was just suggesting that was uh. I I feel like I would benefit from that, but thank you for that.
No problem. And I think there are ways that we can do this. Sorry. And I do see hands from Commissioner Manhadas and Kamora to say, I think there are ways that we can talk about. Both the individual maps and kind of like the thinking and rationale behind them. And then there's also an appetite, it sounds like, for having the bigger philosophical discussions too. Um, and so if we maybe start with the bigger picture. And bigger picture discussion. We could also move into talking about each map. How folks are feeling the strengths or perceived weaknesses of them. Um, and then having that as part of a discussion before actually jumping into the maps themselves. So. We could do it that way. I'll I'll let you think about that as an approach. Um, Commissioner Manhadas and then Commissioner Kamora, please.
Yeah, I was, um. Again, second that piece around not putting folks in a position where we have advocates for specific maps. Um, I do think as a collective process, um, we do need a process that allows everybody um to have. Perspective and voice added to the conversation. And I do feel like the straw poll is the easiest way to gauge and then having folks speak to their rationale at this point. Um, would be really helpful. I feel like that's a more personal way for folks to speak to what their position is, whether it's I'm leaning towards this. Or actually, I see, you know, and I saw this in the chat, merits to both and here's why. And so I'm, you know, not really leaning one way or the other. But I think giving everybody on the commission the ability to actually speak to that would be really helpful because I feel like. Where we were leaning yesterday and I I I want to pull us away from that is that we do have to like. Owners and advocates for each map. And I feel like we need to have a full conversation. It's really hard to do on Zoom. And so I just feel like this is an easy way for each of us to sort of like, again, it's a temperature check. There's no commitment. Nobody can, everybody's allowed to change their mind later, but it would be helpful. To get the voice of each commissioner on this process, um, so that we can gauge where the where the full group is at, because ultimately, when it comes down to it. You know, in our next meeting, we're gonna have to make a choice and we need a certain amount of commissioners to support a map in order to. Move forward. So like, that's just the reality and I I want to get out of the, myself included, the sort of dominant space of like three of us debating about this. And would like to get into a space where everybody can sort of share their perspective on it. And questions that people might still have, because then somebody else might be able to ask that question or answer it.
And there are a couple of ways we could do that, too. There could be, um, we could use a round robin method where each commissioner, you know, gets a. A a little bit of time to just get some thoughts out for each. And those thoughts. For instance, Commissioner Fleishman could be, I need to hear more about each one to have a full deliberation, just. If that's the, there are a couple of ways we can do straw polls, if you will, like we can literally do, raise your hand if you like this one, raise your, we can also do the round robin method that just kind of gets touches everyone. And if you don't have anything to share, you can also say that too. Commissioner Kamora, then Chisholm, then Saxena. Commissioner Kamora.
I actually am asking for information. Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me? Okay. I guess I would need, maybe because I'm kind of a numbered thing. In the each of the maps, whether it's the older or the maple. The piece that goes across. I would like to know how many actual neighborhood boundaries are affected and how many people are affected. Versus, because there's a difference in the numbers between the group up in the central east side versus the East Morland. Uh, Selwood Grove. And it may not be a significant difference, but I think we ought to look at that. As as because. And my understanding is the West Side had. Approximately hundred and forty-four thousand people, which is like way too le- not enough. But. Are we pushing equal numbers of people? Are we pushing slightly higher numbers of people here? Is the effect on a neighborhood going to be more intense with one or the other of the? The versions is, um, and I don't know if you have an answer right away, or if that has to wait for the mapping exercise, but that would help me. Process better what where I would come from in terms of the decision making. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. I'm I won't speak for Alex, but I think. If Alex, if you could work on maybe trying to get. An es- an estimate for the population that would be included in each of the areas that cross the river for the maple. Map and then for the alder map. And then also, I think it was the number of neighborhood boundaries that are touching those areas. Okay, thank you, Alex. Um, Commissioner Saxena and then Commissioner Baldini.
Now, I feel like I, um. I should just describe a little bit of where I am right now because it doesn't really lend itself to a straw poll, since I actually really like both of these maps for. Totally different reasons and would be fine with either one of them going forward, because as Commissioner Chisholm said, they are by far the strongest. Maps that we've seen. Um, and um. In a lot of ways, I think both of them meet all of our criteria. So, um. That's just where I am. I'm. Totally fine with both of these maps and I may be the only person who feels this way and I'm, I promise I'm not trying to be wishy-washy about this. I really do like them both. So. That's where I'm at.
Me, after, when we do take a break, I mean, this could be just a good way to, again, take that temperature and then. I don't have to put you in a box. I never like putting people in boxes.
You don't want to do the binary.
Uh, Commissioner Baldini.
I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Kamura's point about um the effect of 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 the districting. On the neighborhood depends on the population. That's absolutely right. Uh, it also depends on the composition of the neighborhoods. So if we really want to get. Get into it with the data, we really want to look at the level of wealth, the level of voter turnout rates. Um, those are the things that. Determine whether or not representatives pay attention to neighborhoods, how much money is there and how likely they are to vote consistently. So in addition to population, if we're gonna really take apart these neighborhoods and figure out, okay, what's going to happen to these numbers if they are with the West Side, we need to consider. The wealth and the voter turnout rates. Thank you.
Um, and. As part of the mapping too, so the mapping doesn't, the mapping exercise wouldn't just have to be actively drawing lines. We can also. That we can't have both be both drawing lines. My understanding is that um it's too difficult to both draw lines on the same map that also has data overlays. But we can spend time in the data overlays if you want to drill into specific. Um, aspects of areas of the map, different neighborhoods, looking at voter turnout, median income, um. And a number of other data elements too. Made that note. Okay. I'm gonna put this on the table. And let me know if this works. We can still take our break. Um, at this point. If we take the break, we can come back, spend some time in a discussion. Um, we can try to do the kind of a round robin, maybe give each commissioner up to thirty seconds just to kind of. Put the thoughts on the table. You can specifically talk about maps. You can talk about items that you're wrestling with, pose questions to the group. Um, that would probably give us about. That in itself could be about fifteen minutes, but then we can have a discussion about that and then take some time, see where we are and then get into more of a. Live mapping. Can I get either like thumbs up if and nods if that sounds, okay. That's all, that's that's what we plan to do. Um, but let's take five minutes. Gather thoughts, get some water. I'll see you back at seven, oh, seven. And then we'll do that uh temperature check. Thanks, all.
All right. We'll hop back on. Okay, I'll wait for the less few folks to join us. And then walk through the process for the round robin. Okay, waiting for just a few more. Commissioner Saxena Kamora Chizam, have you joined us? Okay, with thirty more seconds. And then we'll hop. We'll just start the process. Okay. So the last, the last couple of folks can join and can jump in, we'll get started. So let's have first sharing at this point, we'll go around the group. It'll be voluntary to jump in when you'd like and if you'd like, but please raise your hand. Like to hear from just a commissioner, every commissioner once, or anyone who would like to speak once before we have folks jump in again. However, if there are specific questions or points of clarification around like anything you've heard from a particular commissioner, you can add, you can ask that question and maybe that person just jumps in to provide that clarification. Outside of that, we'll, we'll give everyone up to those thirty seconds before you jump in again. And if there are any questions before we start, please raise your hand now. And Commissioner Segal.
Okay, assuming we've got the thirty second rule. I won't blather. My initial one I'm more interested in of the two at the moment. And I agree with you completely, Commissioner Saxena, that I think there's benefits from both of those. I still think the bigger point of discussion, as a number of you have said, is where do we cross over, you know, from west to east? Maple three seems to make the most sense to me with regard to just a general feel and my history in the community. Particularly with regard to the central east side discussion points that we had in the past. I like the Hosford Abernathy with Buckman Kearns better than I like Moreland Selwood with the West Side. The other adjustments that were noted by the work group. Fine, don't have a dog in any of those fights. They all sound logical. Thank you for your time. I was in an airport all night last night and was not able to participate. Last point, I really do encourage us to keep hearkening back as we get further towards a decision toward the, the criteria that we committed to and that we're bound to federally statewide and local charter wise. So just keep those in mind, keep them top of mind, because I think whatever we decide has to be completely defensible. And we really need to put our words where our thoughts and our commitments are. That's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. That was about a minute. But just to kind of gauge you on like about what thirty seven. Would anyone else like to jump in and share? Commissioner Valdini.
Okay, I'll go. So y'all know I like to be very transparent and you know, I am still a big fan of the Alder map. And here are the reasons why. Number one, this map allows multiple voices to be heard in determining what happens to the central city. So I'm a big fan of the central city plan. I just think it could be better accomplished with multiple representatives involved in it. Number two, it prevents asset packing, which as we've discussed can be destructive to representation because of the centralization of well power in a single district. Number three, it leaves the development of Omsi, which will be happening in the next five to ten years in the hands of the neighborhoods that will be affected by the development of Omsi. If we use Maple, then Omsi development will be determined primarily by the West Side representatives. Can't remember. I think this is number four. In terms of neighborhoods on the east side being concerned that they will be disenfranchised if they're combined with the west. I'm not concerned about this when it comes to the Selwood, Moreland and Reed neighborhoods. There are two reasons why. Number one, they'll make up about ten percent of the population of the district. In the new electoral system, which is multi-member ranked choice voting, that is a powerful number. So the new electoral system we're going to have, ten percent is a big and powerful group. So I'm not worried about that. However, as I mentioned before, the composition of that ten percent matters. So that's when it becomes important that these neighborhoods are wealthy and their voters. So the fact that it's going to be ten percent they're wealthy and their voters makes me confident that they will not be disenfranchised. They will not be ignored. You know, the various concerns we heard multiple times. Whereas when it comes to the Hosford Abernathy Buckman and Kearns neighborhoods, I worry that they might be disenfranchised. I worry that they might be ignored because they have lower rates of voter turnout, lower income levels. I think that's it very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. That was also about a minute. So if it's okay with folks, we can expand it to a minute. I want to hear all your thoughts. So Commissioner Manhadas. Thank you, Commissioner Valdini.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Valdini. I think that actually reduces the amount of time I need. I feel like every point that Commissioner Valdini just made is every reason why I'm supportive of the Alder map. And we'll just say that I have strong opposition to the Maple map because of the, my concerns around the asset packing issue. I do feel like the central east side Omsi belong in an east side district. And so that is a driver of my concern about that. But every reason for supporting the Alder map is, is I align very closely with what Commissioner Valdini said. And we'll just say that that to me feels in alignment with what we heard through the community process. I was able to attend the Southeast Neighborhood Engagement Sessions and the West Side ones and felt like I heard from more folks and so would Westmoreland about process that they would be interested in being in a district with the West Side. I did not hear that on the inner Southeast Side. So um, yeah, I'll keep it pretty short.
Thank you, Commissioner Manhadas. So we've heard from Commissioner Segal, Batini and Manhadas. Would anyone else like to share where they are right now in the consideration of the maps? Or maps? Commissioner Chizam.
Yeah, I I'm a big proponent of the Maple map. I think the two best maps is it earlier. But I think the reason why we ought to support the Maple map as our, as our final map is one, as Commissioner Segal said, for the central city element, I do think that the Omsi development is going to essentially be a central city type development. And it would be, in my view, best if the commissioners that were focused on that element were the ones who are also focused on the rest of Central East Side with downtown Pearl District, South Waterfront, right across the river there. The central city has a, has different kinds of zoning needs, parking needs, employment needs and so forth. And I think it makes for all of the, under the rubric of one district, three commissioners. I can appreciate the argument from Commissioner Valdini, maybe I'll be everybody. I just think it works better the other way. The second piece, with regard to asset packing, I made a list of thirty five assets across the city. The only two that we're talking about here that are different to Maple and Alder are Omsi and Reed College. I'm not sure that's really a relevant thing. And then finally, I think this is the big one for me. You've heard me and Commissioner Saxena says a few times. I think it's really important that we have a district where renters have the ability to fight for their needs in the city. It's the challenge between renters and landlords right now is central to the economy of the city. The Maple map gives us a western district that is fifty nine percent renters. The west district, think about this, the reputation of the west is wealthy people. In the Maple map, the west district will be fifty nine percent renters. That is more renters than in any district in both maps. I know that the concern from books is, well, they don't turn up to vote. My counter argument to that is wait till we have a candidate, a campaign, an organization, people want to fight like I'm a political operative. I would be thrilled to fight that campaign on behalf of the Renters Rights Candidate, representing those people to essentially have a Western City Council member who fights for renters. Seems extraordinary to me. It's an opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. I know folks were opinion earlier. Okay, Commissioner Lumley.
Oh, yeah, my opinion really hasn't changed that much from the last meeting where I'm leaning towards the Alder map. The Maple map is still interesting. I'm not necessarily objecting to it. I just think for the reasons that Commissioner Valdini expressed were very powerful to me. Although I do welcome the opportunity to to learn more about the benefits of the Maple map, which which is, but I, my opinion really hasn't changed. However, I do want to note that there's no way I'm allowed my vote to interfere from us completing a map. So if it becomes, it comes down to a very close vote, I'll go with the group and make sure that this does not get turned over to the alternative process, which would be City Council deciding. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, oh, there's a lot of thumbs up. I just wanted to note that. Commissioner Fleishman? And then Commissioner Fleishman.
Yeah, thank you. I, first of all, I wanted a second, what Commissioner Lumley said. I do feel that this is a very close call between two maps that represent really good attempts to, a good faith attempts to address all of the challenges we have. So but I want to say I favor the Alder map. And actually, in the most recent a design, the most recent design changes to the Maple map leave me slightly more concerned. Again, I would be willing to vote for a Maple map if, if, if that's where the, where the group went. So I don't, I don't want to take that off the table. But I believe that a kind of incorporating more neighborhoods doesn't in going eastward in the Maple map doesn't help to address the kind of development of central city. It actually incorporates neighborhoods that are a little bit not like the central, not like the central city. And the second thing is, is and I, and, and just to endorse Commissioner Chizam, I do think that it's important to hear and create opportunities for renters to have representation. But but the west, the west district using the current Alder design would have a predominance of renters also with fifty, fifty-four percent renters as opposed to the fifty-nine percent renters. So it's still, it doesn't obviate that. It doesn't take away that opportunity. So for those reasons, I am leaning towards the Alder map.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleishman. Next, we'll hear from Commissioner Bensickel Robbins and then Coach Adam Rindey. And then Commissioner Wise.
I
Commissioner Robbins.
Yes, so I also want to concur with the other commissioners before me that I want to vote for a map and voted out of this commission and I will vote with the majority. But I do want to say that I am supporting Alder. I have thought a lot about the capacity for representation and what comprised, what kind of underpins that? And I believe, I still believe that having resources and having a demonstrated history of high voter participation and having a demonstrated history of being able to elect candidates to the city council already, to the Multnomah County Commission from a particular area is a good indicator of, of capacity. And I agreed completely with Commissioner Chizam that renter, there should be renter representation on city council. But we did not hear uniformity of concurrence from all of those neighborhoods that they see alignment between the central east side renter community and the renter communities on the west side. If I had heard that, I would even feel more strongly supportive of Maple, but I didn't hear that. The other thing that we received, which I was very, I have to say, I was surprised. We received a letter from the Central East Side Business Association that they did not support Maple. And I would have assumed that they would have been supporting having all of those business interests in the west side district with the downtown business districts. But that didn't happen. So I just felt like I've heard some things in the public testimony that make me think that the promise of a renter representation through Maple is less of a, feels like less of a sure thing for me than the possibility of representation for for Westmoreland, Selwood, Eastmoreland and Reed in the ability to elect a council person in the west side.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rindey and then Commissioner Wise.
Thank you, Autumn. I'll be quick here. I just also want to second the sentiment shared. Commissioners Lumley, Bensickel Robbins, especially Commissioner Valdini, I think everything you said just really articulates everything that was, has been floating around in my head. And I just want to say like as, as a baseline, I do you know, both of these maps meet the criteria that voters approved. And again, speaking just as a commissioner, you know, I, I could see myself supporting either of these maps because I would agree that these are the, you know, the best possible maps that we could offer this city for adoption. All that said, my, my preference is the Alder map as well. I think there is data that supports having that Selwood block in that Cross River District with the west. And I do prefer having the central city shared among three districts as opposed to the two. And I think that ties back to the collaboration piece around uniting Portland that came through in our public comment analysis and we, we heard in our, in our hearing. So that's, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wise.
Yeah. Hey, everybody. I'm leaning towards Alder. I'm leaning towards Alder for a few different reasons. And I've said a few times, but I like, I will keep bringing back the asset packing conversation that we've had, you know, in and out throughout this throughout this process. I, I do. So I think I should also say that a few years back, I was on the board for Community Alliance of Tenants, their C four board. And receiving that letter from, I'm no longer on their board, to be clear, but receiving that letter from CAD, I mean, like I, I say that because I have been a renter before and have gone, like gone through those issues. And I've also been on the organizing like side of of that issue as well in Eugene, not in Portland, but in Eugene. And I what I told the folks that were in the work group yesterday is that, you know, this is a, you know, it's, it's a organizing conundrum a little bit, right? Like I am afraid that we would subject renters to more affluent candidates who would run and win and their voices would be drowned out. Like, I think that's, that is a fear that I have. And so, you know, I, I just, I go back and forth and really anything's possible. I would love, I would love for there to be a unified effort around around building renter power. I think that'd be beautiful. I would, I would hop on that so fast, but I can only make decisions with the information and the knowledge that I have right now today. So that's why I'm leaning towards. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Coach Joe Judd.
Just to pick up what Commissioner Wise and Smith mentioned. This is not a statement for either map. This is more of a statement for a process. So other, while we at the conclusion of this straw poll or before we conclude it, it would be great to sort of see all the metrics that we've been talking about on each one of the maps. If you can do an overlay of the maps or see them separately and look at what the renter populations look like for each one of them, particularly in the areas where we're, we're talking about the tension between the two maps, which is where the intersections of east and west that will occur. If we could look at the, as I said, the the renter populations, the social economics, including the, the poverty numbers there, that would help provide additional data point other than just commissioner comments to help enforce at least my opinion about the straw poll.
Thank you. And just a point of clarification. I think you said that you'd be okay with having that be part of the, one of the focus of the mapping exercise, being able to see the map overlays with the data, right?
Yeah, it's, 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 for, for, for me, it's one of the key inputs that I would need in order to sort of say I'm leaning one way or the other. Because I'm not leaning towards a map, I'm more leaning, have a bias towards whether the data would take us and help support the rationale of a decision as opposed to let's choose a map.
Great. And also I have a feeling you're also not alone. This is just a temperature check right now, but being able to see the data, a number of folks have brought up the, the kind of data splits and other requests as well. And Alex did say that he's going to be prepared to have those data overlays and breakdowns too. Okay. So for, for most of you, Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to give the voting commissioners the chance to share first, but I will jump in. I think so based on what I heard in all the public hearings, I was at all of them and all the public comments, I think the Alder map does to me seem to be the one for many, many of the reasons that have been mentioned around asset distribution, like the huge priority of cross-city collaboration. And so having the central city in three different districts promoting people working together. And then in addition to that, I know that this question around renters has been such a big kind of conversation topic, especially around the Maple map. And I was forwarded the numbers that had been pulled, I believe during or after the work group last night around renter occupied housing units percentage wise in both Alder four and Maple three. And I, it was, it was actually an interesting moment reading this because whereas, as Commissioner Chizam pointed out in Maple three, that west district would have about fifty-nine percent of renters. In the Alder four map, that west district would have about fifty-four percent renters. And the southeast district would have forty-seven percent renters, which to me with the, you know, the new form of government with that twenty-five percent threshold to me is like two renter powerhouse districts. And so like a huge potential for like renters, renters across the city to, to organize. So that also shifted my thinking a bit in, in favor of the Alder map as well.
Thank you. Alex, also, I know that you, you did pull that data and I think members of the working group received it, but could we also just run through that? I don't know that we have to do it now, but maybe during the, the mapping session. So if everyone kind of sees the same data.
Definitely.
Thank you. Okay. So I believe we haven't heard from in this, in this portion, Commissioner Saxena and Commissioner Green, Commissioner Saxena, I knew you closed us out with some thoughts, but I'd invite you to, if you have anything to add.
Yeah, now the only thing I would add to what I said earlier is that to me, the most critically important thing is that we, we pick one of these maps as, as a committee and that we don't, we don't end up sending this to, to city council. So that, that's, that's in addition to everything else we've heard. That's like, that's largely where I'm at right now. So thank you.
And then Commissioner Green, did you still want to?
Yeah, I just was going to say I agree. I strongly support both the maps and lean towards Strongly support both the maps and lean toward Alder. For many of the reasons that have already been um referred to, but uh specifically um. Kind of the community of common interest theme. Uh, I got a strong sense that the uh. The uh. Buckman inner southeast neighborhoods were uh, I and I believe they are more uh strongly affiliated with uh. Uh, those neighborhoods to their east and uh around them.
Hey, and I'm realizing too, Commissioner Kamora. If you have any thoughts that you'd like to add. As well.
Wait, now that I turn the mic on, um. I would say I am leaning toward Alder simply because. When you look at the voting block of Sellwood, Eastmoreland. Even with the renter population, those are still very. Committed people who will vote. And I think that. Because you don't have. Quite the um. The dichotomy of having to. Provide. Provide for a lower income status that is traditionally been with the Buckman current area. You can pu- you can do the organizing better. And I frankly think that if if the organizing. Um, I I'm sorry, I don't remember which commissioner said that, but I think it was Commissioner Hanson. About having the renter population be a preponderance in both. The the west side, if you put in the Eastmoreland, the central east side, when you leave Buckman alone. And I think that that is a very strong statement and for us to. Not consider that. It it is not, is is again ignoring the data, but I also know that from a point of view of. Getting people. To participate in the government, this is going to be real different than what they've done, because not only do they have to get kind of the voting thing. But they also have to do the ranked twice voting. And I think this will be an opportunity for those people who. Can and are are willing and believe strongly that whether you're a renter or homeowner. Your vote counts. And I think this is, this will be a test that what whether this community believes in that or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Um, we actually did hear from everyone, so I I appreciate that. If if we're ready. Uh, I would, I did want, I did want to see if Alex would be able to. Show the renter data just because I I think like we've been talking about it, but not everyone has seen it maybe. So just wanted to have you share that.
Sure, let me share my screen. All right, can I get a thumbs up that you guys can see the map? It's blank right now. Um, so we're gonna turn on some of the renter data that we have from the Census Bureau's American Community Survey. Have, we have a couple of different ways to look at it, but I think what we want to see is. Owner and renter uh occupied housing here. And this is by block group. So these are a little bit bigger than what we're used to seeing compared to census blocks. Um, but then I go ahead and put on. The legend, you can see that the green colors are the owner occupied housing. And this is by um predominance. So. If I click on a census block here, our blocker, excuse me. We'll see how there's two hundred and thirty-three housing units of those two hundred and nineteen are owner occupied. Therefore, that area is green. It's predominantly owner occupied. Um, and then when we're looking at the map, the strength of the predominance is how dark the color is. So you can start to see. Where there's pockets of very predominantly owner occupied housing versus where you get the specs. Um, downtown, essentially side, there's more renter occupied housing. And then where you get those kind of lightly shaded colors, one way or the other, that's kind of a symbolic of a mixture. So because it is shown in the shading. Um, it's a little difficult to to kind of show some of the districts at the same time, but I think. I can um try to do that if there's areas of um where a boundary is that you want to look at a little bit more. But uh if I turn on, you know, we're speaking in terms of neighborhoods, I think from the chat and what we discussed so far. We're all pretty familiar with the differences of Alder and Maple. Um, but for instance. Alder. Would have Sellwood, Reed, Eastmoreland. And these other kind of uh associated neighborhood organizations, they would be part of the district on the west side of alignment. So you can see how there's a um. Mostly. Owner occupied block groups. We pan up, we look at Kearns, Buckman. And the portion of Oxford Abernathy that is part of the draft map of Maple. Which is running along Southeast twelfth Ave that is predominantly uh renter occupied housing. Any questions or other areas as you may know?
Is it, is there also an overlay of? Like uh households income?
Yeah, we pulled a couple of different things earlier, so. Let me let me show you a couple of those that are available here. So. First one we could show would just be median household income. Licenses track, so. In that case, um darker green colors are higher median household income. And the lighter yellow or colors are lower median household income. Let's switch back and turn those. Neighborhood boundaries on. You can kind of see others, a little bit of variation here. Little bit more concentration of of higher median household income in Eastmoreland compared to. Sellwood, a little bit more mixed based on the tracks. Pan up and see Kearns, Buckman, and that portion of Oscar Evernathy. Can see the difference there. This was um a different way to look at that data. Um, just to compare it to the city as a whole. So greens. Are the tracks that have higher median household income compared to the city as a whole. In comparison to the purples, which is the lower median household of the city as a whole. Population below poverty level licenses track. So higher percentages of those below the poverty level are the darker reds and oranges. Versus lighter colors, there's less of a percent below. So down here, it's kind of the inverse, you know, now we have lighter colors because we know that these areas like Eastmoreland. Have a higher median household income. Whereas now we have darker colors up here represent. More the population below popular.
Can Alex, can you scan out so we can see the whole map also?
Definitely, yep. For a quick clarity, I'm gonna. Turn off those neighborhood boundaries.
And also Commissioner Judd, I know that uh you had your hand up a couple of times.
I was uh telepathically given uh Commissioner Wise and Alex. Uh, thoughts on what to pull up next, but they they already did it, so we're all good.
Telepathy is beautiful, you know? Um, so.
Alex, can you also show the whole um by income, one of those that you showed but for the whole map also?
Uh, yeah, I think median household income should be a good one to see.
Thank you.
So now we've uh taken a look at a few layers and and we can continue in the mapping. I wanted to press pause and then. Just see how we're feeling kind of post discussion, seeing some of the data overlays just to kind of start us off. Where are folks right now? Commissioner Lumley?
Feel kind of weird jumping in first. I feel like you're having somebody else jump in first, but. Based on everybody's comments, it appeared that we had the majority of the group. Was favoring the Alder map or slightly in favor of the Alder map. And uh less so in favor of the Maple map. Um, and I heard some really interesting comments from the commissioners. Well, I agree with Commissioner Judd about the need to see more data. You know, I wonder if we could, if we might get to the point tonight of. Of voting to not consider one of the other maps moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Chisholm and then Commissioner Siegel.
Yeah, um, I think um, I'm gonna think, I'm gonna make the motion that I think Commissioner Manhara was gonna make earlier tonight. I think we should. From this point forward, consider the Alder map, the base map, uh do have the conversation we need to have. Uh, about that map, uh making the adjustments we made, if any, I don't know if there are any. Um, and I further move that next week's agenda. Include a formal vote. To accept the Alder map as our final map. Uh, and beyond that, I think we could might even move all the August twenty-one agenda out of this next week and.
I I will second that motion.
And uh that was for the record, Commissioner Sexton, right? For the second?
Yes.
Okay, um, also Commissioner Siegel, I think that's all your thumbs up as Commissioner Chisholm was making the motion. Okay.
I agree completely to the motion in the second and uh let's uh let's rock and roll and make adjustments as necessary and let's get this thing approved.
So to be clear for minutes, the second is actually Commissioner Sexton. I saw you trying to get in there, Commissioner Siegel. Just want to be clear. Uh, and so we do have a motion on the table. We also have a hand up from Coach or Judd. I'm gonna repeat the motion. Check in with Coach or Judd and then um we will, we will vote on it. So the motion, actually. I believe it would need to be two motions, just so we are clear what we're voting on. Um, so the two motions uh would be to. Eliminate the Maple map and use Alder as the base map going forward, making any adjustments. And then there would be a second motion to have and, okay, perfect. And then the second motion would be to have next week, have the first vote. On a revised map. In next week's agenda. And I think that is. I think within the bylaws, that is, that's fine. Um, if that that seems kosher. Um, so.
I'll second the second motion.
Second the second motion. Okay, there you go. Oh, Commissioner Siegel, is that what you were trying to do? Second to second? Uh, okay, in that case, I guess it's technically Commissioner Siegel for that one. All right. But Commissioner Manhata is, thank you. All right, and then um Coach or Judd, I know that you had a hand raised right as we were. Going through the motions.
No, Autumn, my telepathy is working very well. I was just gonna let you say the same thing that you articulate. I'm good, I'm good.
I'll sit. Perfect. And then Commissioner Bensical Robbins, do you have anything?
I just want to clarify, is it Alder three that we're going to, um, I mean Alder four, excuse me. Um, versus the draft, the draft map that was out um for public comment.
I'm I'm seeing heads now. Okay, um, so. Sorry, the corrected motion, what we'll be voting on first is to uh have Alder four be the sole base map. Uh, for consideration going forward and that the commission will focus on making adjustments to that at that map is the base. So we'll vote on that one first. We use modified consensus for this. So is there any opposition to that motion as was presented? Okay, so seeing none, that one passes. So going forward, our base map will be Alder four. And then for the second motion. Are there any questions before we jump into this one? Again, this one is to call for a vote. To plan for a vote in the agenda next week to vote on the revised version of Alder four. Okay. Get no questions on that one. Is there any?
I think it would be great before we. Do that vote, again, if we just review the summary statistics for that map. Uh, to to validate all of our expectations and concerns and just make sure we have no more questions regarding to.
Would it be friendly to table the motion but revisit it until later in the discussion, Commissioner Chisholm, since you made it?
Yes, let's just do that by the end of the night tonight.
Okay, um, so we'll keep that one on the table and we'll review it. And see if we're ready. Okay. So we have a map that we're going to focus on for the revisions. We still have requests to see the summary statistics. And actually, Commissioner Judd, I think by summary statistics, you don't just mean, you're you're saying like not just the overlays, but you'd actually like to see. More like analysis and and like kind of final statistics for by district, right? Not just by neighborhood.
Absolutely. So this is the this is the three, the layers that Alex was able to pull up. The homeowner versus renter, uh, the poverty uh numbers. I think if um. Uh, there were several others that he pulled up. Obviously, the the ones, the basic ones that we look at in terms of like. Uh, race and ethnicity, uh, all those were stacked. He's already kind of done that uh in a prior email, but. He uh he already has a list of those, but yes, that's what I'm talking about, that collection.
Okay, and. I was also tracking, so there's still interest in. Beyond statistics, um, the need to, the question around the border for Montevilla and the Jade District. Or specifically. Uh, being able to, I think there may be other data requests as well. And then.
Um, so, sorry, I think there was a outstanding point. Just let me, let me know if if you actually heard this point. I think you asked. For the clarification on the email that Commissioner Chisholm sent around regarding the Jade District. Did you? Get that, was that probably probably asked it for you?
No, I I haven't heard it yet, but I, the assumption is that after we've completed this portion, we can come back and talk about that. I think there's still time tonight.
Yeah, and that's and that's what I was, and that's what I was noting. Actually, it was the request to like really look at that border. Um, and to validate it. There were all, there's also uh discussion around looking at all the borders for Rose City, Rose City Parkway. Uh, Montevilla, Jade District. And. I know this was from working with Hollywood as well, just to double check that those are, those have consideration. And Commissioner Kamora, I believe your request. Uh, for the data was uh Alex sent that around seven thirteen. For specific neighborhoods, but we can also work, walk through that, so you don't have to just read it, but we can also see it on the map too.
No, I I'm fine with the data. Uh, it's pretty much. Just about even. It 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 does not. Um, what it also tells me is that. The economics are more of an issue. In the movement than the actual population numbers. And I think that that's something that I wrestle with. Because I do know that with. With our adjustments of the borders. All the little tweakings, how is that gonna affect the total numbers? Being uh assigned to the west side. So that was kind of the thing that I looked at. Thank.
Of course. Uh, and then I also wanted to note too, um, I do see your hand, Commissioner Judd. Did want to note too, that we can have, if folks are not yet ready to move into mapping as the focus, we do have just over an hour. Uh, left in this meeting. We can still have more kind of focused discussion before you uh. If you're not quite ready to jump into the maps after the round robin, but I do want to get a sense of that. So, um. If folks are ready to, let's say. if folks are ready to, let's say, yes. Does anyone need more kind of discussion without looking at the maps at the same time? Can I get like thumbs up or a hand raise if you'd like to just kind of focus on discussion, bigger picture discussion? For a bit longer. Okay, I'm not seeing any. So we'll plan on going into the maps and then Alex, I think you've got the data requests. And then if you have additional data requests, you can raise your hand for that or drop it into the chat too. Commissioner Judd?
Yeah, sorry, my telepathy wasn't working that well. In that moment, I apologize. The, one of, for an additional data request is to look at the portion of Sowood that's currently represented in Alder and see if we, if possible at all based upon voting age population, what percentage does that represent? When that's joined with the West Side?
Population of, or sorry, the percentage of
Yeah, so if you took it, if you took the total as it's represented currently in the older map, you took the total West Side population. And then you looked at, took, took the total voting age population of that representation. And then say, what percent would the Sowood, Westmoreland communities represent of that total West Side population? That would be helpful.
How of, okay, sorry. So, so, so within Sowood and Eastmoreland?
Yeah, if you take that total, whatever reporting from the West Side, sorry, from the East Side into the West. If we could just sort of have an understanding of what percent of that voting age population of that total district, that'd be helpful.
Got it. And then I saw Alex nod for that one too. Okay. Alex, would it be possible to actually look at the table breakdown for that voter by district? The, sorry, the renter population versus the homeowner population. And I think that that, that would be the summary, the summary data that Commissioner Judd was referencing earlier.
Yeah, would you like to do that right now?
Yeah, I think we're ready now.
Get that up. Let's see. Let me try to share more than just one thing here. It's asking me to do just one application, but I got a couple of different things to show. So let's see if I can do that.
No problem. While you're pulling that up, I do see Commissioner Vincent Robbins has her hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, and I put it in the chat, that Alex has been working like a yeoman on all of these tables. And I think that, I'm not sure he's finished yet, the tables on voter participation because they have to pull from a different set of data. So anyway, but I do think that's an important thing to look at too.
And that was voter participation was actually a request from Commissioner Val Dini earlier tonight.
And that we can definitely show on a map. I think the trying to fit the large precincts and do spatial analysis to get it to fit into smaller areas might be a not get us exactly where we want to be, but we can definitely show voter turnout by precincts for the twenty twenty presidential election and the most, and the recent November twenty twenty two election. And that is in the web map application. I could show that very easily. Overlay it with neighborhoods, that kind of thing, get a sense of, of voting turnout there.
Thank you, Alex. And thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Chisholm.
Yeah, one of our tasks that we'll have to do next week or the twenty first, if we still are at the twenty first, is to identify which districts have which members. And in particular, that will drive which districts are electing people for a two-year term, meaning they're up again in twenty twenty six midterm. And which ones have a four-year term, twenty twenty eight. We have, as I understand it, no rules or requirements about how we number them, though the Charter Review Commission had suggested, but not required, that we make the two of the lowest voter turnout, the ones that happen on presidential years, to maximize voter participation. I don't know if anybody here would just reason that. We just have to figure out what those two are. It's not a hard number, Alex, and just a flavor of like, these two clearly have lower voter count than these other two. That'd be helpful.
Definitely, when it comes to that, we will have to do that work at this time when we're, you know, making changes, smaller areas, that kind of thing. It's a little less. Yeah. So can you guys all see my screen? And we see two things, table on the left, map on the right for reference.
Correct.
Great. So what we're looking at here, just so you can line up the districts. We have the total occupant housing units, also known as households in each of the districts. And then that is broken down by being renter occupied, sorry, owner occupied in that column, renter occupied in the next, and then percentages. This is for the draft map Alder. I can switch over and we can see Alder for the values do not change that much because the geographic modifications were not that large. But we can do that if need be. We can come back to questions on this if you'd like. Otherwise, I'm going to scroll down. I got two things on this table. The other was requested in the last few days. This is looking at the ratio of income to poverty levels. This is also a, a table that comes from the American Community Survey. We get a lot of information. What we're looking at is households that have income less than two times the poverty level. That's what we're kind of constrained. So if you want to know, yeah.
Yeah, sorry to pause you. Given that we, you know, the, the motion was to focus on Alder four as the base map, can we, do you have this version of these, these, these tables for Alder four? Thinking, yeah, can we use that? And then, perfect. Thank you.
The reason I'm switching the map, there's just the indistricter, I'm trying to align with the numbering compared to the draft app. So for reference, one, two, three, four, it's the same layout here. And then the stats are like so.
Okay, perfect. So just, so folks have it, Blue, the Western Most District is number one. The Northern Most District is number two. The Southeast District, the Lower District is number three. And then the Western Most District is number four.
Thank you, Autumn. And just to, to wrap up on this ratio of income to poverty level, the metric we're kind of looking at here is this column, less than two. So this is households with less than two times the poverty level. So we were to look at this or think about it in a map or has a high percentage, because as we switch over to looking at something like the median household, and when we look before, we know that East Portland is less affluent than some of the other areas. So that's why we see a higher percentage of those less than two times the poverty level. If that makes sense. Any questions on this information?
No, but I did realize I misspoke. Eastern Most District is number four.
Correct.
And I do see a hand, Commissioner Vincent Robbins?
I just wanted to, I, I, I thought it was interesting when you provided this, Alex, because after listening to all of the public hearings, I don't think people realize that twenty percent of the West Side is, I, I don't think that anyone of them would have guessed that twenty percent was the number of at poverty at this level on the West Side. It, I mean, it's, it's not that significantly less than central or north, northeast Portland. So it just tells you something about the composition of the entire West Side.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other thoughts, reflections, or questions while we have the maps up and the data? Based on, based on at least this, this portion of the data, are there any any requests to revisit certain boundaries based on either the, the distribution of wealth or the, or the distribution between renters and homeowners within the, this version of the map? You don't have to answer now, but I want you to think about that too. Okay. Okay, so I know that some folks were thinking about the economics and wealth distribution kind of being one of the key areas that you wanted to zero in on versus just the number of, of folks in the district and the distribution there. But if already, we can look at voter turnout figures.
Sure. I, I can really quickly pull it back up to, I did pull some other request information. That was average house, average and median household income. That's useful.
Yeah, you did poverty and you did poverty level now. And so we'll look at another metric.
Yeah.
Income versus wealth.
Yeah. Get that loaded and on the screen.
While reading, Commissioner Vincent Robbins?
Well, I just wanted to say while Alex is working on his numbers, someone was kind enough to hand us at the Smile Community Session that we did, the voter turnout comparing District forty one and District forty two. Forty two is Buckman, Laurelhurst, Belmont, and forty one is Sowood, Eastmoreland, Woodstock. And just with respect to this map, so that Sowood, Eastmoreland voter turnout for twenty twenty was ninety percent. And for twenty, for twenty twenty two, it was eighty percent. She had done all the numbers, so.
All right, so you should be seeing two, two more things. Same thing on the right to the map for Alder four. Now on the left, we have average household income at the top. These columns are, are needed for calculation purposes, but what you guys want to be looking at is average household income. And then another way to look at that is, is median household income. There are no questions there. I can expand the map and show the voter turnout by precinct.
There is one hand.
Just want to caveat this particular set of information. Well, this is household income. For example, we, this is, well, this is household income. We do have to caveat this, that this is, does not necessarily correlate to the voter population and who is actually voting. This is just, this is just pure reference to understand what the the district contains within it in terms of population. This goes to a, a point around the theme of the opportunity that exists. But there's, there's going to take some level of infrastructure building to ensure that some folks have the opportunity to participate in this opportunity.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chisholm.
Yeah, I'll concur with that. What I just want to say out loud here, folks, that income number tells you exactly why East Portland has been underrepresented in the city of Portland for so many decades. And I'm just super proud to be part of a process with all of you that from the very beginning, like, I don't know, February, we were all totally aligned that East Portland needed its own district. So that these people, the, get representation that they haven't had. And so we've just been fighting a lot about other stuff, but I was super proud of everyone here for having stuck with this piece the whole way through.
Thank you. And a lot of thumbs up and reactions to both of those two comments. Commissioner Kamora, please.
And I do want to thank all of you for recognizing that that has been a significant barrier for people in East Portland. And I hope that they understand that this is their opportunity. And I'm going to work very hard to make sure they understand that this is their opportunity to get better representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Also, also a lot of reaction to that, positive reaction too. Commissioner Judd, I can't recall, is your hand still up from the last time, or did you have another comment then?
No, I, I, I want, I just want to piggyback on those last two comments. And just to say that you know, some of this, there's this system legacy issues in this, this tied also to this discussion we've been talking about in terms of assets and asset package. Each one of these district has assets within them. And so one of the important opportunities that exists is what are the appropriate assets for each one of these districts? And I think this, this outlining provides again, an opportunity, not just for representation, but for community members to take additional pride in and the development of those assets, so that it doesn't feel as if we have this tension of asset packing that's, that's well, with a focus around the central city. And that we can look at each one of these districts as opportunities to invest and develop assets that are not just beneficial to those communities, but can be shared across the city.
Thank you. Anyone have thoughts on this kind of data? I think Alex on, sorry, on this specific, this specific set of summary data. And then Alex, I think you may have do you have other summary statistics that you need to share, or was that the last of those prepared ones?
If we're gonna, if we're just curious about Alder version four, that I think concludes it.
We, we did look at voter turnout, but you don't have the voter turnout statistics, summary statistics for the district, though we did look at voter turnout briefly on the map.
Yeah, so we can do that right now. So the reason this is kind of difficult is because of the alignment of the precincts and the, the level that we're trying to work on. And we can get some approximations at a later time, but I think it is helpful to kind of look at this map. We zoom all the way out, we're looking at voter turnout from the November third, twenty twenty election year. And the, the color scheme is darker colors, higher voter turnout. So above ninety percent are those dark purple colors. You get into lighter purple, blues with less turnout. Generally, for presidential election, there's going to be higher voter turnout. So that's why the scale is anything less than sixty is kind of that very light blue. We do see some clusters of areas in one bin or another. So a lot of the east side being in that below seventy five, below eighty percent range. So you get into some other neighborhoods, you see that turnout increasing. We want to zoom in so that, I think Commissioner Chisholm brought this up a while ago, the way because a lot of times you might see smaller precincts and other, other places because of mail-in voting. That can actually be a bit larger. So you have some precincts that are pretty big. So if I went turn on the neighborhood boundaries. Yeah, you'll see that there's a precinct that covers, you know, pretty much all Sowood. We don't need, don't care if the precinct goes into the middle of the line at there. But yeah, they're, they're generally kind of following some pretty good neighborhood boundaries here. So you see high voter turnout, Eastmoreland, Sowood, Reed, and we scroll up to the other, we've been talking about, you see how there's we scroll up to the other, we've been talking about, um you see how there's a little bit less turnout in Kearns, Buckman, and Hossford, um. And let me switch over though, because I want to make sure I am showing the precincts.
And while you're doing that, um Commissioner Hanson.
Um, I was just just going to ask Alex to also zoom in on the Montevilla um area as well, once you're done um with others, but is that Stark?
Uh, eighty-second is this line, and then this would be Stark in Washington coming through Montevilla, and although the the boundaries aren't on, I'm going to just click through a couple of the precincts, so you can see them, so this is a precinct that, you know, includes Mount Taven Park and and all this area here. Um, right over across eighty-second, this is another precinct. And the other one for Montevilla, it's right here. So, we do see eighty-second there and Highway uh two or five being kind of a dividing line, seeing some differences, um, the results voter turnout for twenty twenty-two. This kind of has a totally different scale here, because it's kind of hard to show there's less turnout in a non-presidential election, so the numbers have changed in these bins, but the colors represent same thing, high voter turnout in the dark purple, lower voter turnout in the light purple, blue shading. Um, so you see, you know, some common patterns, but a little less purple, right, so you still see areas, um Alameda, um Irvington, they're going to have uh higher voter turnout, we still see a little bit lower voter turnout outside. Uh, we zoomed in a little bit. Have two areas potentially be part of the west district, you see higher voter turnout in Sellwood, Eastmoreland, Reed than you do in Kearns and Hossford Evernething, um.
Commissioner Manadas.
Yeah, and I, this may have been said by somebody, I apologize, I'm multitasking a little bit, but um I think this is just such an important map as we're thinking about the numbering, as we're getting into that conversation in which districts are being elected through presidentials, um particularly, I'm thinking about that, I'm just going to be explicit, say that east side district, making sure that we're giving them an opportunity when there's higher um turnout periods, um would probably be the best approach, but I just throw that out there, because I do think it's a, it's a relevant, important uh conversation to have. That's more relevant to the numbering than anything.
Uh, and you're correct, Commissioner Chisholm did raise that uh as a point before we started mapping as a recommendation of the Charter Commission, or considering factoring in the lower voter turnout for presidential years or even numbered years. Presidential years, uh, or at least having that factor into the numbering in particular. But um, there was a comment or request, Commissioner Judd, I was going to raise your request in the uh chat, go ahead.
Yeah, Alex, if you can do this for us, if you could save uh these versions um somehow, and then send them out as links so that commissioners can access them later, uh that'd be great, like the the these layers um with the summary stats, if possible, uh that'd be great, just so that for folks who are not as astute as going through these layers as you are, they could have access to them, maybe for a maximum, it'd be great.
Thank you. And I saw a head nod from Alex, too. Okay, perfect, uh and from Sophia, uh Sophia was noting that the city attorney will be present at next week's meeting. And so can answer specific questions around numbering, the implement, the implications, and any other more like legal questions you may have, too. All right. Are there other, so are there any other specific comments on this, this breakdown of the data as it comes to voter turnout? Um, or any other data requests? Specific data requests for Alex? And if not, we can probably move into this discussion around specific orders and for district borders, and then kind of validating them or digging into specific ones. Commissioner Vansicle Robbins.
I just wanted to, um, so Commissioner Judd, you wanted um voting age population total for district for the west district, and then for the um east side component that uh is part of Alder four?
Yes.
So versus versus total population, you wanted it by voter age population.
Uh, it'd be great to see the voter age population.
In total, and then the subset.
For the, when you say total, I mean total for that west side district.
Yeah.
Right, uh and see what percent the um the east side pull over, uh the east side join represents in that west side in terms of voter age population? And then uh the latter data layer where it shows um there, there's a weighting that occurs, right, so you have voting age population, but then you also have uh the percent of voter participation, which I think um Alex could develop a similar stat to show um if you weighted that population, what overall weighted percent would that would that community represent against the east, the west side as well?
Yeah, and I can just quickly comment on that, that I can um likely get some total population information very quickly while we're working on stuff right now, and potentially even the the voter age population um within the time of this meeting.
Looks to me like it's a a little bit shy of fifteen percent total population, um. And I don't know, because I don't see, I don't have the voting age population uh tables.
And just in the chat, uh Commissioner Siegel's raising that these, these types of summary statistics, being able to, I think quantify them is could be really helpful for articulating a rationale for the maps. So I know, Alex, you'll need to try to figure out how you can multitask trying to get that summary statistic, but also like to have us focus on those boundaries, too. So maybe, I know that it may not be feasible to do both in this meeting, but can work on getting the summary statistics afterward if necessary, and if you can do it in this meeting, that'd be great. Uh, but maybe we can move to the discussion of if we start with the Jade District in Montevilla.
Actually, actually, if you don't mind, before we move on to that, I can at least get a start of a total population, so, and I'll write this in the chats, so people have these numbers, and of course, we'll, we'll put them in PDFs for distribution, but the total population west side of the Willamette is a hundred and forty-one thousand twenty-two. And I'll share my screen one more time here.
And sorry, to clarify, are you saying west of the Willamette or in the entire westernmost district? Noting that some of it does, or the base map does now across.
West, west of the Willamette, so that's start there, yep, yep. Let me share my screen. Okay, so that total number um west of the Willamette population is a hundred and forty-one thousand. I have that off the top of my head, because we had talked about in the past how it's not possible just to have a a district on the west side, because it would have a deviation, it's, you know, too high, because that's not enough population, close enough to the ideal. So what I did earlier um for um looking at the population for Alder versus Maple on the east side of the map was was to to color that in to have it visually, so I think you guys should see this map where we have those neighborhoods in southeast, there's twenty-three uh six twenty-five, if we um combine those, we have the total, um so just let me do some very quick math. So this represents, yeah, about fourteen percent of the combination of all the population on the west side of the Willamette, plus this area, the blue is representative of about fourteen percent.
Yep, because this total population, that that's what the, that's what the fourteen percent represents. This is why the other number in terms, we need to weight this in terms of uh getting a sense of what the average voter turnout has been. Uh, because that may shift that percentage, you actually may o- overindex a bit greater than that fourteen point five percent because of the higher uh percentage of voter turnout in those communities east of the Willamette. So that's why that 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 secondary calculation uh becomes important.
I agree, I agree.
But well, to to clarify, so we're all following, Commissioner Judd, are you requesting the voter age population, so just the number of uh folks who are of voting age and like in that, sorry, voter age population, Alex, is those who are of voting age, or is it those who are eligible to vote and those who are eligible to vote?
Eighteen-year-old.
Eighteen or older, right? Or Commissioner Judd, are you requesting voter number of folks who voted in a particular year?
Because the former step you gave is a half step between total population and voter turnout. So if you just did voting, voter voter age population, that's a half step between those two measures, but the full getting a sense of the full weighted impact would be to say what has been the average turnout uh in the last couple of elections, um to sort of weight those populations to say is, are you still at fourteen point five, or are you over indexing uh a bit, just no, just are you greater than that fourteen point five because of the high turnout of voter uh populations within that Sellwood Westmoreland District, it's just an important number to have in our back pocket, as Commissioner Siegel said, this as a reference point, just so that we all understand what's uh that that impact of making that decision. So it's, it's, so the that middle point that you said, Autumn, where you're just looking at the voting age population as a percent? That's cool, but it's not, it's not the the full measure of weighting uh who turns out, that the the percentage of folks turn out in those communities relative to the the same percentage on the west side, west of the Willamette.
And I was actually clarifying, because I think I heard the request was the voting age pop was about the voting age population, so just those who are eligible. But I thought when you were describing the request from your context, you were actually looking at who voted, not just who was eligible to vote. It's a second, it was, so who actually, I think the data request was so for people who actually turned out, what portion of those voters were in the Sellwood Westmoreland or uh Eastmoreland area?
I'm hearing this, I definitely think we can work on something, I just do want to remind um everyone that we are kind of, you know, we're working with data usually from the decennial census, so that is the total population, voting age population. Um, but then when we start working with the voter turnout data, that becomes something that's from the Oregon um registrar and things like that, so that is by precinct, we're, we're going to different data sets, all I'm saying is, yeah, it'll take a little bit of time to get that. Um, but to get it, we will be able to, you know, provide some insights and different things that I think will help make the commission, yeah, help them make decisions.
Thanks, Alex. Commissioner Hanson.
I think the one other thing I would say on that topic is that our, the criteria on which we are drawing the lines and making the decision is population period per the decennial census, um and like I hear that this is also will be, as you said, Commissioner Judd in the chat, like helpful for storytelling and rationale, and also like the criteria is population based on the census.
Any other thoughts? On the summary statistics or any other data requests? And as a reminder, we, we probably only have about twenty-five minutes or so, twenty-five to thirty minutes or so for the last bit of this discussion, and I did want to be sure we got to the borders questions. Okay. Ready to start on Monteville and the Jade District? Let's do it.
Uh, shall I take the lead here?
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Chisholm, um, did you want to kick us off? I know that you've been connecting with the different, some folks. Would you be able to?
Yeah.
Kind of articulate your thinking here?
Right, so in almost every place now, on Alder four and Maple three, we were down to neighborhood association boundaries being kept whole. One of the few places remaining where that's not the case is Monteville. Uh, we had some feedback from the Monteville community during our public engagement process, um that they wanted to, for their neighborhood to be made whole. The reason it was not uh was that uh, and again both maps, Alder four, we wanted to have the Jade District kept whole, uh the Jade Business District, uh which overlaps Monteville and the neighborhood just to its south. Um, we had already made a decision to draw a boundary along eighty-second or south, which splits a little bit of the Jade District into the southeast and most of it into the outer east, so the question was.
Sorry, Commissioner. Can I actually pause you, just so we have a visual, so we can follow along as you're describing, Alex, are you able to pull it up? Maybe walk us, walk us through where the delineation is.
Yeah, let me run a couple of things that'd be helpful, um.
And I think given Commissioner Chisholm, where he started around com- uh neighborhood boundaries specifically, that's probably the most helpful layer.
Mm-hmm, so that's what we have on right now in blue, yep, so we have Monteville.
And put an older floor on there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so sorry to have you start again, Commissioner Chisholm, but do you mind?
As you can see, there's a little bit of that green that is inside Monteville, but is in, the Monteville is split right between mostly uh southeast and a little bit in outer east. And maybe, Alex, if you can, pull the business district, so we can see the Jade District on there, that'd be super awesome.
Yeah, let me find that, I know we had a couple of different versions, one was kind of community-driven, and then there is like the formal business district, let me try to look at that as you keep going, yep, yep.
Business district, there we go. Okay, so as you can see, the Jade District has a, is uh split on eighty-second, and we had in our earlier engagement, they had said they actually preferred to be split, so that the folks in the Jade District there could communicate with six city council members and not just three. Um, so now Monteville is asked, says, hey, can you make our neighborhood whole like you did for everybody else? I'll go, I went back, had a personal correspondence with uh Duncan Hong, uh is a one, an elected Metro Councilor and member of the staff at Apano, um and he then checked in with the rest of the Apano staff and confirmed that they are uh, in his words, okay with um and have no major concerns with moving the boundary between the southeast district and the outer east district down from Mill Street down to Division Street, making Monteville neighborhood whole in the inner southeast district. So that allows us to um do what Monteville asked us in the public engagement, and without any objections from our friends at uh Apano and the Jade community. So I'll take questions, and then I think we should have a motion, and then a vote for our consensus thing, right, bottom?
Are there? If, yeah, so what we would want to do is find, determine if that change is amenable to the group, and so we can do that with a formal motion, as we have with others, so let's start with some.
Adding about uh seventeen hundred and forty-five people uh to the inner, have these pushing its deviation up to, you're going to love this, everybody, four point nine 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 eight percent.
Hey.
Oh, Alex.
Yeah, this, uh, so we'll check the, with the population shift, and I believe I heard seventeen hundred would be the shift, um Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Forty-five.
I was going to say, that was my telepathy working, because those were literally my questions. Thank you, Commissioner Chisholm, so it's under. Thank you, Commissioner Chisholm, so it's under five percent deviation.
It is under five percent.
Under five percent as you can be. Barely, cool, okay.
Okay. Uh Commissioner Fleishman, and we'll have Alex confirm the figures too. Uh Commissioner Fleishman.
Thanks, uh Commissioner Chisholm, my recollection of the feedback from um Montevilla neighborhood was perhaps, as you've characterized it, that they wanted to uh have the neighborhood boundary remain intact, but I remember my recollection is that the main feedback was that they didn't want to be in it, they didn't think of themselves as an inner east side neighborhood. And uh we've drawn a map where they are in the inner east side uh district, so um I'm a little neutral on this, if it doesn't make a difference and if it is being responsive and uh we're meeting all criteria, it's fine. But that's, but my recollection was this was not the the main piece of feedback we're hearing on, at least early on uh prior to our map drawing process.
That's, I guess, true, and both things are true, you know. There's lots of neighborhoods you don't want to be where we're putting them, sorry, Alex, we go.
Okay, um. Commissioners Exima and then Commissioner Vintickle Robbins.
Yeah, I I um I'm wondering if one of the um elections wizards in this group can help me think this through, if it's more like advantageous in terms of turnout or or votes to be have slightly fewer people in district or slightly more just because we're moving people out of the East Portland District into the, I think the southeast district, um and is, does that in any way disadvantage um these Portland District in terms of like turnout, I I kind of, I'm thinking um you know, when you think about like the Senate in Wyoming having the same number of senators as California, that it might be like that, but I am not an elections and vote counting wizard, and I know we have folks like that on this commission side, just I want um I'm just curious about that, I want to make sure that we're not doing anything to disadvantage the East Portland District.
Well, that's what deviation is for, right? You'd be in a Wyoming, California situation if the deviation was twenty, thirty percent. Now, that's the reason why we had that that number, that five percent, in order to ensure one person will vote as a basic principle.
And I'm wondering if we can actually have Alex uh weigh in on this question.
Sure, yeah, I would say something similar to um Commissioner Chisholm is is that that's why we're aiming for the total population to be equal across all the districts because in in one sense, you could say having fewer people in a district than the than the ideal, those people actually have a little bit more, a little bit more voting power than the people in the other district that has more population.
That's the like the Wyoming, California Senate.
Yeah, so in this case, with, you know, a lower population in the eastern district, just barely, you know, under the ideal. Um you could say that the East Portlanders uh that live in that area have a little bit more voting power.
Great, that helps me support this.
Uh Commissioner Vintickle Robbins, followed by Commissioner Minehaddas.
Um I just wanted to follow up on what Commissioner Fleishman said, I do think there were some comments about Montevilla being in the east versus the southeast. But I know that we had, and Katie can probably confirm this, I know there were comments from people who actually live in that neighborhood there where we had done the market and mill cut that were very concerned because it cut through the middle of their neighborhood, it cut through a grade school area, it cut through a park area, they they actually all commented on those specifics. Um and we had a number of folks from Montevilla who just said, we want the neighborhood whole, we don't want that corner cut off of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, the only thing I would add, um I think it's relevant, I would actually um just tag Commissioner Wise, uh if he has thoughts about this too, is that my understanding of folks who do a lot of organizing in East County and those eastern areas, like those are some of the most walkable areas for them to be able to engage voters, and so folks do spend a lot of time um in those neighborhoods, particularly Montevilla and that space, and so I think that in terms of voter turnout, yes, it's true that each individual voter might have more voting strength through like just less numbers, I do think that in terms of activity, activity and organizing, there is some value to thinking about um what a value there is for putting this particular neighborhood with an east side district and how that might serve to be more of an organizing base for folks in that area, um just to encourage, you know, engagement and activity, so I'm neutral on where this goes, but I do think that's a relevant piece, you're sort of putting up, you know, again, it's like mapping from an organizer perspective, somebody who goes out and knocks on doors and hears from constituents, it's, you know, we're putting a lot of that in the southeast neighborhoods, um and so just wanted to put that on the table uh for consideration.
Thank you. Uh we, Commissioner Lom.
Uh thank you for the conversation, and I want to thank Commissioner Chisel for uh reaching out to those folks, and it sounds like it's agreeable with those who are affected, so I can't see why we would object to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other thoughts on this proposed change, Commissioner Valdini?
I just wanted to hear from Alex, just in his experience is four point nine nine nine, is that gonna be okay, like it's 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 close to that five percent makes me a little nervous, so is that do we need to find a couple percentage to get us away from five percent or like a little, you know, a couple point ten percentage to get us away um? Or are we really, you know, just looking down the line at like, you know, if the court reviews this, things like that, is four point nine 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 really a hundred percent safe, is that okay?
I would say from my experience, the the number we're actually wanting to be well with under is ten percent, so we're well under that. Um so I have no qualms um with this, and based on my experience with other entities, counties, cities um in California, Oregon, Washington, I could pull some stats for next time, just so you guys can see some of the overall deviations for those, but um I know off the top of my head, San Diego County um was between six and ten percent. Um and I think the important part here is, yes, we want to have a population deviation that's below ten as low as we really can get it, but we also want to respect neighborhood boundaries and all the other criteria, so I think here it makes sense um to not have to decrease, you know, by a path to a one percentage point just because we feel like we have to get the overall deviation out, if we feel like this is aligning with administrative boundaries, neighborhood boundaries, everything else we've been considered from the public input, so I wouldn't be worried about that.
Awesome, thank you.
Um and just for clarity, for the record, I actually think it would be helpful to have a motion just to record the decision. Uh if there's a formal one on the table, I think Commissioner Chisholm, you were earlier, you referenced perhaps wanting to make a motion?
Yeah, so the motion would be to change the boundary between the southeast district and the outer east district from Mill and Market Street down to Division Street.
Okay, um and Alex, do you mind just pulling that map up just so we can visually see what the new boundary would be, and Commissioner Vintickle Robbins?
I second.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I can see you all, so is there any opposition to the changes stated to move? No, I'm just gonna make sure I have the to move the boundary for call it the where it's southeast district uh down to southeast division. Okay, seeing none, uh that'll pass, and so that'll be the new boundary there. See, is there? Would you like to focus on any other particular neighborhoods? I know that we did talk about uh the boundaries, so we've talked about uh Monteville uh earlier in the evening and last night, we talked about Rose City Park, as well as Roseway, Hollywood and Brooklyn. At this point, is there, are there specific requests to focus on any particular border? I think I saw Commissioner Minehaddas, you came off mute.
Yeah, I mean, my request was gonna be to look at options for keeping Hollywood and Rose City particularly together, just because there's a lot of collaboration there, but um I'm not sure if there's a stated preference, but I know different folks, I don't think there's consensus in those particular neighborhoods about whether they're in a northeast or southeast district. I think part of it is folks just figuring out how to be in the same district, but if it gets too far with population deviation issues, especially if we're looking at, as we just pulled Montevilla into that, um I think that might not be possible, so I was just interested in looking at options for that, but I'm not gonna die on that sword, so.
I think there's a helpful, I think there's a helpful synthesis. Uh so right now, based on the map where we are, based on the population deviation, we're sitting at currently four point nine nine percent. Are there other aspects and elements of the map that you'd like to focus on? And maybe, Alex, I'm gonna ask you to pull it back up.
No, that's, that's fine, I want people to see each other until we need the map, um and and if we are still gonna be doing any questions of live mapping things, yeah, we can certainly look at this, I just zoomed into Hollywood and um I'll pursue this at some time, you know, now that's Hill District. Um yeah, it would be a little hard maybe to pull Hollywood in um and increase that even more without making other changes, so keep that in mind if you're just ruminating about that.
And this helps show where the population is currently sitting with those changes now in effect.
Yes, I did change that right here, so now we're on division with the Hill District, yep.
What what would it look like if we pulled Rose Rose City Park into the northeast district, would it just throw everything off whack?
Let's take a look.
And then Commissioner Vintickle Robbins, I'm gonna come to you right after we see this.
I, all I wanted to do is ask Alex um be- before next week's meeting or whenever we may vote. Um that whole edge along eighty-four, when I was drawing it, it's kind of funky um because I couldn't figure out the little census tracks that are under or next to the freeway, so can you smooth that?
Yeah, we can work on that, yep. They know little little things like that, let me plug in these numbers real quick um to get the overall deviation after changing that, so.
Um also, Alex, you you do still have did you mean to include that there's still some yellow? But I think you're supposed to, do you intend to follow along?
These are, I'm talking about this right here, it's a, it's the golf course.
Still the, yeah.
Yeah, it's one big census block here, so it's kind of one or the other, I it shouldn't have any population, this one is also kind of strange as it um is along eight by eighty-four, so we can work on that, but generally um these would be the the new populations per district. Um unfortunately, doing that raises the overall deviation to seven point six percent.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, and I feel like if folks are disconnected from the golf course, um people are gonna be pretty upset, so I I retract that thought experiment.
You know, we're actually building, you know, we're learning, it's a thought experiment, we're growing from it every addition. Uh Commissioner Vintickle Robbins, did you still have, did you have another? Perfect. Okay. So we've got thirteen minutes left, but we also have a motion on the table, a table motion from early in the night. Um if that still stands, the motion and there's nothing else and there are no current uh proposed revisions on the map tonight. The motion was to prepare, move toward the vote and move toward a vote in the next meeting on the current base map. First, Commissioner Chisholm. Yep.
Second to that.
Okay, I was gonna double check, Commissioner Chisholm, you still, I get, and then we have a second. Is there any opposition to moving forward with planning to have a vote in the next meeting on the current version of the base map? Okay, that'll be our core agenda. Commissioner Vintickle Robbins.
So I just wanted to clarify, we're we're still waiting to hear back from the planners about the weird uh part of the port uh property, so uh we can talk about that first uh next week, because we should have an answer back, okay?
Yes, and there are I think there may be some some data requests that folks may have um that we can prepare, prepare in the interim, and we can, we can plan to use next week's meeting to really focus on if there are any final proposed revisions to this base map um having, with you having taken a further review, considered it more, deliberate, and then assuming all goes well, we can plan to have that first vote, Commissioner Chisholm.
I think maybe a question for our co-chairs here. Once we have finalized a map, the only remaining business is to number the districts, right? And then, I don't know, have some sort of you know, memo to the future conversation, um lesson learned, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'm wondering if we can just do that all next week and not do the August twenty-first meeting, I don't know that we can decide that now, but I'll leave that in your capable hands.
Do we respond to that or you you wanna table that, gotcha? I I I appreciate that they give back a time, time. I I do think that um uh next week we'd want to um understand those themes, and also we said they have to still be written and um and thoughtfully written. And so I do think we will likely need that last meeting to approve that the that write-up uh and give folks a time, sort of, you know, thoughtfully do it, so um I, you know, giving back time would be great, but I do think that uh we actually might need it, so can we uh table that until, see how far we get?
So what we can do from a, from a staff and planning perspective, we can come prepared, have have the maps cleaned up. Um I know there was a request around like specifically looking at the eighty-four, you know, focus on validating um on focus on validating all of those borders as they exist, cleaning it up, um those interim data requests that were made, we'll prepare to have that vote. We can also build in time to begin the reflection process as Commissioner Judd laid out um and start laying out that plan, and we can talk about how to deliver on that memo, uh I think here Sophia, I'm getting over my skis, so you can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh we can also evaluate how much time, if we needed a meeting on the twenty-first to wrap up, we can evaluate whether we need the full three hours that had that have been scheduled, if we need to move to that date. Okay, I didn't get too far over the skis. I'm gonna skate once, I'll admit it. Commissioner Siegel. You're on mute, Commissioner.
Sigh, sorry. I I think in the interim, it'd be really good that uh if people give some thought over coffee, beer, wine, uh what have you, uh be thinking about lessons learned, uh what it is that we uh, what we got out of this process. Uh you know, I I think as Carrie, as you put it, you know, note to, note to future self, but I think if all of us come with a uh kind of almost like sticky tab versions uh or bullets at at least uh or more lofty thoughts if you need to, but uh how can we, how can our future selves do better next time, and what information and or timing might we need to do that job more effectively?
Thank you, Commissioner, I saw a lot of head nods um prepared, so definitely have those reflections prepared too. Are there any other requests for next week's meeting? If you don't have them right now, you can always follow up with the staff and we can work to build those into the agenda going forward. All right. Any other thoughts? Before we adjourn? Early, Commissioner Laurenti?
Thank you, um. So I just wanted to say before we adjourn, oh, sorry.
Thank you. Um, so I just wanted to say before we adjourn, I'm sorry. There you go. Okay, cool. Um, I just wanted to say before we adjourn, um, just a quick, you know, thank you to. Uh, this entire commission and staff for the time and the discussion this evening. Um, we've. Taken a very critical step forward towards adopting a district plan, which we have slated. For business next week, so I want to also strongly encourage to honor the occasion if folks are able to come downtown to maybe take that vote in person and maybe have that drink that Commissioner Siegel mentioned, maybe. Um, that would be uh encouraged and um, yeah, I have it under good authority as well that there'll be some uh some good snacks down here as well. So. I just want to put that plug in there and um again, appreciate all of you for the discussion tonight. Thank you for this forward progress and uh. With that, I think we can close out unless there are any other comments.
Uh, Sophia, do you just mind pulling up just the final slide so we can do this as we formally would? Oh, no. Yeah, there we go. Uh, so the next meeting will be a hybrid meeting, though all are invited. Encouraged to attend in person. Um, that's scheduled for Wednesday, August sixteenth and is scheduled from six to nine P M. Uh, we will be posting the agenda for that meeting, I believe. Minimum two days before the meeting. Okay, all right. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you. Congratulations, everyone. And see you next week.